This time we'll call it Tuesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis and myself, Jack Willie are your supervisors. We have Lisa Smith and Bjorn Beck from the Auditor's Office, Lilang Goki, our Administrative Assistant. And at this time, we will open or make a decision on awarding the bids for the tree removal and stump grinding at the Codfish Hollow Cemetery. That is the first item on our agenda today.
Do you want to reread them this or do you, um, was it any? Conversation on, did you have any calls?
Nope, I didn't have any.
So we did receive three bids last week that we opened up here in the boardroom. Uh, the three bids that we received were from Steinis tree removal for one thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. Dollars carried custis for three thousand eight hundred and fifty and J C landscape and maintenance for four thousand and two, two hundred dollars.
Pretty easy decision to make.
Yeah, I would like to award the bid to Steinis. I'm second.
A motion in a second to award the bid to Steinis. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carry. Todd must have heard himself. And we welcome to the meeting today. Thanks for showing up and being here. It's nice, always nice to have you. Morning, Todd.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, so just have one thing, it's a utility permit to move overhead power out of the way for day-to-day projects. Uh, bridge IA zero two five two. So it's just to move it so we can get in, do the work to replace the bridge.
Is that the only look at?
Yeah.
Make motion to approve.
I'm a second. Motion in a second to approve the utility permit. Or light energy, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carry.
Okay, uh, really don't have much else, uh, just update, uh, working with Mike, putting together turnover files, like a training regime for the new hire for, for Jacob. So hopefully when he gets here, we'll have a, a, like a system or protocol of what we're going to train him on and getting started doing things. There's a whole, and there's things we need to train DOT wise, uh, through the airport, TBMS, all that stuff. And there's also just day-to-day operation stuff like if a surveyor come, comes in and wants to know where there's right away information, how do you go find that in the office and that kind of thing? So developing that list and also it's chronological. So like, uh, in January, these are the tasks you do in January. These are what we're going to do in February, March, April, blah, blah, blah. So we'll have a general training list and then also chronological list of training for him. So um, I got a draft of the destination lighting policy. Still waiting to confirm from like a line, already see what their agreement or protocol would be for installation. I know like for what we do in Clinton County, we don't typically pay for the install, but we pay for any future repairs typically, uh, like if it's hit by a car or something like that, but luminaire, we don't pay to replace that typically. There's, it, it varies across the board and then obviously we would pay for the power for the energy. So once I get that confirmed from a line already see, then I'll be able to come back to the board with the policy and figure out what we want to do. If there are costs associated with it, I was considering putting that forward as a, a ARP project, but it would be pretty minimal cost, I would think, even if we do all, you know, ten.
I don't know where we're going to come up with ARP money. People, we have it all allocated. Sorry, Todd.
It hurts to ask, so, uh, but.
I think that's one thing you're going to be out of luck on.
True.
That won't deter me from asking.
See what, what the bid is and submit and see where we're at. Yeah, I mean, we have some.
Well, we know where we're at.
You're over submitted by a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. If everything is, that's listed would be built.
The, the list that I compiled, um, were ideas, some had been committed. Um, some we have paid for and we do have some for future projects, but I only have estimates, you know, I mean, we talked about the harbor wall. Um, my estimate that I put in, it could be half of that or it could be twice as much. So, you know, honestly, we don't know about our other funds. We have estimates, but.
The figures that you gave us, it was all, it was all allocated.
We have, we have.
Everything came in.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're over, over allocated at that point.
Yes.
So this isn't a first come, first served type situation. So if I can spend the money faster.
Or we can, we can spend it fast if we need.
All right.
That seems usually not a problem for us. Yeah.
I did hear on K M Q this morning, I see that they're on there. We're thanking for that, but they had announced that the bridge will be closed for an hour, fifteen minute intervals for one hour this morning for beams setting.
This morning?
Next week, I thought it was.
Well, the beams don't come in till tomorrow.
Well, then they can't set it today.
Yeah, so, uh.
Well, they could.
I'm sure while they're swinging in, they're, they're going to have that, 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 the run around lane closed, but supposedly they're getting delivered tomorrow. I talked to Mike, but I don't know if that meant we're going to, they're going to try to sell them because they just poured the water on me yesterday. So it's got to get the strength before they settle. So.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I might have missed her that. I might have been texting myself, so.
While you're driving?
I think, I think we have to answer right now, Josh.
Nine to ten AM tomorrow, uh, actually sending them is a couple of different rounds, three or fifteen, twenty minutes each. So it's, it's going to create an issue, but it's not an hour shut down.
It's an, no, it's an hour, but they're fifteen minute intervals, like three times.
Yeah, well, I'm assuming they'll, they have to.
Between an hour, they intend to set all three.
Yeah, get the trucks in, the beams come on multiple trucks, the full truck in, set the beams off of that truck, they'll wait for the next truck, back it in when they're ready to set those up right closing again, I guess.
So it is tomorrow, Josh. It is, thank you. I, I really like the idea of the structure of duty to have for the new hire.
A plan, a plan.
Something set in place that this is, this is what, how, when and where.
Yeah.
It's nice to have that off line too, what happens every month and.
Yeah, I have Mike, like Roger, I'm going to have him doing one shop foreman. Office manager, they all should have what I call a turnover file that says in, in case of emergency or extended illness or whatever, I mean, they should have a, a list of what essential duties need to happen each month.
In a rotating type series or whatever it may be. I mean, now things change in emergencies, but that makes complete sense to have something that they can look at.
Yeah.
Kind of guidelines.
Yeah, needless to say, I don't know everything, how to do every single thing that goes on the office, so. That's all I have. Yeah, I don't know how to do that either. I don't drink coffee, so. I'm a Mountain Dew guy in the morning.
Well, that's. Bolt and Mountain Dew and.
It's, Mountain Dew's got orange juice in it, do you know that? It's a sports drink. All right, that's all I have.
We'll bring it in.
All right.
Okay, we're going to wait for visitors and citizens later.
That's up to you. I know Josh is here. I'm, but we're going to have to do visitors and citizens later, um, if that's okay to do.
Now we'll certainly welcome Josh's comments, but.
Fill some time for you.
John Hanson's coming and he wants to be able to address the board. So he wanted us to shift our visitors and citizens. But if you have any comments that you'd like to make, please make them.
Just that, now we received that Prairie Creek Recreation Area contract.
I would come forward, Josh, if you don't mind for the camera.
Yeah. Yeah, we wouldn't.
I'll back up fifteen seconds. Just trying to say, exactly what I said, uh, we did receive the contract from Destination Iowa folks about uh, the recreation area improvements, went through it with twenty tooth comb, highlighted things that I had questions on, involved Sarah from the beginning. Nathan, I think is going to be discussing that tonight at the Conservation Board meeting. Our next council meeting is September sixth. Um, it's, it's, it would be my expectation that each governing body has some sort of resolution authorizing staff to sign agreements for the Destination Iowa project. But Sarah's pretty well involved in what those questions were in the email trail and has a documented record about what exactly this is. And it's not a sixty-page contract, it's, uh, just a small handful, could be a twenty-minute read, easy. Gives us ability to amend if needed, seems pretty flexible, uh, gives us a good timeline and, and, and all those things. So I, I think I'm sitting comfortably in the city is sitting comfortably and I think there'd be some good questions at the Conservation Board. Uh, that's answered tonight, so it'd be good and just kind of keep inching along here and uh, in terms of what the city has to do procedurally to get the biggest part of it done, being Prairie Creek improvements, we're meeting with the D N R at the end of this month with our design firm. We're going to go over, uh, sponsored water project and what that actually looks likes, looks like parallel to this project. So, uh, things are moving along ever so slowly and, uh, but they're going.
So, so a final draft will come out and it's something you can email to us, correct?
Of the contract.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
The stipulations, I mean, the Sarah reading already, if it includes the county, I would like to see it anyway. It's just read over.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think that we provided some sort of, um, supervisors backup for the meeting, you know, to go over and I'm happy to pop over again. Uh, you might have the same questions I had that are kind of answered an email at this point.
This is it.
Really need to make some kind of email. So, yeah, I highlighted a couple of things and there was some, uh, there was strangely, there were some questions that they had about forty-one thousand dollars that was, uh, un- unidentified or something compared to our total project costs, but they just didn't award us the full amount we applied for anyway. And I said, well, that's, that's what the application was and they agreed to where that was coming from entirely. So I, I probably too far in the details there, but it's extraordinarily simple. Where those identified funds are, um, and you know, we can always come back and amend if needed and and, uh, and do what we need to do to improve the area out there. So, uh, there's been, it's almost been, I think stressful to Nathan Jones, how much people are excited about this and wanting to find out more information. I mean, he's fielded a number of different folks that are interested in the disc golf portion of this and people in that community have, have given my email asking to see the property free of charge and walk it out and I met the group out there once that are just absolutely enamored with the beauty of that whole area that way. So I mean, as they have described, everyone that's seen it or seen it on a map that come to understand what's happening out there. They said this recreation area has the raw materials to be something really special for the area. So um, it'll be nice to see what design plans actually come of this and how we finish it out over the next several years.
Yeah.
And it's a work together on, yeah.
Yes.
That's, uh, that's all I'm here for.
Okay.
Deb, are you giving up time?
Yeah.
Thanks, Josh.
Yeah.
Do you want to do some of your business?
I can, yeah.
Okay, this time Lisa Smith, our, our.
So this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the August ninth, twenty twenty-two board proceedings is written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspaper.
The move, second, with a motion in a second to publish the minutes of the previous meeting, all those in favor.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the Auditor's Office to issue warrants in the publication of claims listing for a total of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-six cents, including a hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents of jail construction claims and authorized chair signature on the project cost recap for the law enforcement center.
Motion to approve. I would second.
Your motion in a second to approve the claims as presented. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carry.
Motion needed to accept, place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Okay, bro, second.
Motion in a second to approve the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carry.
I did ask Sarah to come down so we can discuss some of the other things that are on my agenda that we, I would like to talk about today. Said she's not here yet. I think that with so many things going on, when Bjorn sitting next to me, I think we need to talk about some of the issues with moving people around here at the courthouse. And.
After yesterday's meeting with you, I don't think we, I don't think we've discussed that. Yes, I'm kidding.
Well, I mean, I think, um, I'm going to let Bjorn speak about that, but we do have some phone issues that we need to talk about.
So first issue is we add into the engineer's office with our little boy. We don't have enough phone lines in there. Um, currently the magistrate court uses a drain long line from the little middle, middle office or magistrate offices and their, all their state equipment is. So when they have to do a conference call with in Portland, certain speak to that better, they drag that phone into there. So we're going to have to get a phone into the magistrate off, port. Site to use that in the office for county employees. And then again, in that middle office and juvenile probation office, there is not any county network wiring yet because it's been a state offices. So we would have to run cabling again, network cabling.
So when we just did the wiring, we didn't put in place anything that would use them offices and they're still in our building.
The state offices.
It seems like we're behind updates here.
Well, we could have done more, I guess, and raised the price more.
So do we have an estimate of what it would take to do this?
No, I could talk, because I haven't, I didn't know until last week really that you're wanting to move for this woman then, man.
Well, I'm not sure. We don't have, we don't, we've not talked to, talked to the court system yet. They come back with, but we definitely decided we need more office space and there's office space here that's not being utilized.
I mean, I think ways of using our current system, but whether that's, if that's not the route you guys want to go with it. I mean, if, if we move out one of, one of them out of the health zoning office into the zoning office up by the district courtroom, that's all county stuff still. And then you put your potential secretary in with whoever leaves, Elizabeth or Lori. Then you're not moving any phone lines, adding any phone lines, adding inter, interlines. But if you don't want to go that route, then you have to figure out another plan.
I think the important thing is we find out how much it would cost to do that. And you said you didn't think there was even room to do it.
On the phone system, yes. I've had to have him physically come and look at it because basically they explained to me they need two pair to go from the phone directly downstairs into the phone room. Or, or the alternative.
Who needs that? The court system?
Whoever wants a phone.
On the county side.
So you're going to have to add, there's only one phone in the magistrate office, not the courtroom, there's nothing in the courtroom in the magistrate office.
Well, that's their problem, not mine.
If you have to supply them a phone, I guess it's your problem.
Well, I, I mean, I think it's but to me at this age and age that, that every room in this courthouse is not accessible to a phone and the internet or whatever else you need.
That's where you either upgrade technology into an IP phone system.
Is that wireless?
No, it's not wireless.
Or is the state one? Okay, does state have a, a line coming in?
State has their own internet line, but we, we have to supply them phones.
Oh, you need to go on the internet to make it.
So.
So then physically, if we do end up with two assistant engineers, that's the question is where do those?
Maybe shorter phone in there as well. Maybe two.
Well, we still have to update our system. I mean, we can't wait till another five, ten years and, and not need it, not like we're going to move forward here. I mean, we have mechanic, mechanical issues. We have other issues that we have to move forward. I see, I don't know. I mean, we have them offices that need to be utilized and it seems a perfect workspace. We had issues with that other office before with the cooling and activity up there during the courthouse, during the court sessions, there's people surrounding that door. You can't get in and out of that door. But to me, that's, that room is not the answer. That's a, that's a sitting room for me and you, if we want to watch a webinar or something with.
Yeah.
I think we need to move forward with.
A plan. I think we at least need to get some estimates as to what it's going to cost and what all has to be done.
So we did a system for when Corey's back twenty-some years ago for the main office when I built that. Every room had three workstations and every workstation went back to one room. So if you wanted to come over here and we're curious, you went in the room and plugged it in from the other one throughout the whole system.
Yeah, but that was in the planning session. We're past that.
We've got to start drilling holes and doing what, but I still think.
And we were doing fifty-nine.
You can do that with a computer now.
If you can, well, that's, that's the route to go then.
Is that secure enough? Phone system.
That's a complete new phone system if you go that route.
I can remember is the state, it wouldn't work for the state employees because they are a totally different system. Of course. Which they, I mean, they need to be.
Whatever need to do, we need to figure out plan going forward in our future here because we need to utilize every space we have in this courthouse. Obviously, we're not shrinking.
I'm here to be.
I'm not shrinking, but. I mean, as, as we move forward, I mean, I know we're going to lose the extension office and whatnot, but, um, you know, there's.
Migrated out of the basement.
Yeah, yeah, and that's.
Well, and we know that Lisa's planning a, a new hire and they're sharing the world is not rooming or office space for another employee.
Right.
We're going to squeeze another employee.
Well, well, mighty squeezed.
The point is that we still needing space in going forward and we need to prepare for that. So let's get what our cost might be or what our options make. We need a system that.
We need to replace the phone system.
For the future too, that's, so when we do it, it's not absolutely in a year or two either.
Yeah.
Something that makes.
I mean, we just spent, what did we just spend on all the wiring?
Wiring's not the issue.
Okay.
It's our homes.
Well, get rid of.
Okay, you got the money.
Well, let's, let's see what our options are. Yeah, I mean, we can't.
We'll make the contacts.
We can't live from there. So we do have wiring places, just phones.
This system is.
Not state. The state's still going to, if you move the state people to account, current county office, they will have to redo their wiring.
So that's, that's, that's their ticket, right?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. I mean, we're supplying the space. And from what I read, it's up to us how much space we provide.
That's right.
But, uh, to me, that courtroom on that so, left side. There's a lot of room up there that's not being used.
Well, we all realized that. We were there, we looked at it, we saw the the offices that we had to put in for the lawyers to meet with their clients and all of this stuff. We, we know that there's a lot of space that's not used very often.
Yeah. But seeing that has no, that does not have any county wiring at all.
And that's fine with me. We don't need that up there. But we get it in our main courthouse. This hallway, the two branches are our courthouse and are what we should be using for our employees.
The state offices, as long as I'm known, so that's why we didn't put that county stuff in it.
I mean, well, that's just it, but we still move forward, I think, yeah.
I'm like, I'm glad.
See, we, see, we can.
Yep, we have to do that. We have to look at it.
Okay, all right. Um, and I did, I, I wanted Sarah to come down so we can talk about the lease of the Andrew Jackson Care Facility. As far as how do you want to proceed, our leases of September first, um, September thirtieth, I'm sorry. So, yeah, thirty is so. What's the wishes of the board and how to proceed with this lease?
Well, we have certainly advertised that it's available to, for people to.
Do we or?
We're talking about Andrew Jackson Care first.
Okay.
Oh, okay, with, with Todd?
Yes.
I think we need to have a work session.
Yeah.
And or Brian or whoever's, you know, I think Todd, most certainly. Todd, come in the last time we negotiated.
Yeah.
I'd like to renegotiate, yes.
Okay.
I mean, what, how do you feel, Sarah, that we should proceed?
Um, if you want to have them continue leasing, which I'm assuming you do.
We certainly want to continue leasing.
Then we just need to decide if there are things in the current lease that you want changed, including whether you want the rent to go up or stay the same. And I know, um, I had, I had some notes, this is a three year. If you do more than three years, then we have to have public hearing.
Okay.
Um, I do have some notes on some changes like, um, the water fountain fifty-fifty, changing some of the wording to say they have to maintain the yards that includes everything, have, you know, trees and all of that. Those were the two main things that I had put on. So if there's anything else that from the last three years needs to be changed, now would be the time to do that.
So does Marty mow that now or?
No, they do. But they use our, we own the.
Um.
According to this, they have to do their regular maintenance line, but it's ours.
Okay. So, oh. I mean, with the last contract, we pretty much filled out everything what was.
We sure tried.
Huh? We sure tried, yeah.
And we've had to look at it quite a bit.
On this fan and the motor on this one. Who's fifty-fifty and who's?
Yeah, so tenant will handle the preventative maintenance such as oil changes, bleeds, et cetera, for the Kubota and John Deere tractors. And then landlord is responsible for replacement and repairs of which are fifty dollars.
Actually, we have two more.
Yes.
Well, the John Deere's got a brush hold on, that's, yeah.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah. No, I think we need to have your session.
Oh, I think so too.
I mean, what, what's our, do we have to public notice anything? So we're in a timeframe here, September thirtieth, we, we need to move forward.
Yeah.
Put Todd on the agenda if he's available next week.
Yeah, I think we need to.
Next week.
Well, I guess.
Will we leave Tuesday afternoon? Or do you have a morning meeting?
No, I got it, it's four forty-five.
Oh.
No, we can work that in the morning. It'll take a while, I don't think.
I just think we need to check what Todd sees when he's available and have them come in.
Yeah.
And ask them to go over the lease to see if there's anything that they would address differently in a new lease. And then we can do the same.
Okay, all right. I think we'll move on. Then it sounds like we've got the care facility at least taken care of. Oh, Mike?
No, that's, I think I have talked about somewhere. Could you just email the new?
The most recent?
Yeah, more recent.
I can email.
Make notes on that or whatever.
I believe, Sarah, you did send notice to our current renter at the Andrew Jackson Farm that we have terminated. So um, we're in the early stages, correct? Right, so now is where you know, decide how you want to go forward. Last time I think you did bids and then an auction, I think after that.
You allowed the top, the, the bidders to raise their bid and the public here are at the opening, yes.
Um, so whether you want to do it that way and what kind of timeframe we're looking at.
I think it works fine that way. I've heard comments of, uh, I'm not going to go sit there in front of everybody and raise my bid and know what it is. I mean, it's public record anyway. I understand that side of it. Um, that they don't want to sit here and, and tell everybody what they paid for rent, but the county farm.
Well, they still be, it still becomes public.
It's still public now, yes. Um, I do think that, that November opening was a little late because that's about the time they're really going for more. And as long as the lease is over on the first, actually November first, but we could put it out. Runs from, this runs from November first to March.
No, it is February. February twenty-eighth.
February twenty-eighth, yeah, March first.
March first, February twenty eighth.
Yeah, I still think it's good to get it early because if you, you know, somebody's planning on it, they don't get it, that gives them time to look for other property too.
I probably spent twenty minutes on the phone last night, um, with someone that's interested on the farm.
I've had a couple of calls myself and I told him I would email or get any information. A lot of people don't read the public notices, you know.
He was asking for some.
So it's easy enough for us to get information either from these people and emailing the information and they can come and get a form and bid, fill out the bid. I, I see on our bid form, I mean, it basically says what the total acres are. Three hundred and sixteen, it breaks it down into conservation, the forty and timber reserve, nine cemeteries, one acre and San Isidro, whatever that acreage was. But in the lease itself, I think you need, or in this bid form, it needs to have our tillable acres and our.
I know that the lease talks about how many tillable and how much timber is there.
It does, this is forty, two forty-one and seventy-five.
Yeah. Cause that was the question that this gentleman proposed to me.
Yeah.
So you want the bid form to put that in there?
I want that included on that.
Three hundred and sixteen acres now, that doesn't.
That's, that's actually what they're bidding on is the two forty-one or two forty-two, whatever it is, and the seventy-five fashion. They're not bidding on this conservation. They're not bidding on this conservation and the timber reserve.
That makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
And the water payments, what is that, or how much does that?
There's a set amount. There's a what? Isn't there a set amount for the water?
Yeah, I think we supply that.
No, they have to pay the water.
Yeah.
They have to pay electricity for the water. They don't, I don't.
Hundred eighty a year, so they pay for water. Hundred eighty dollars a year, so they have to pay for water.
I think water, water.
I think they pay for.
There's a phone on it.
Right. Let's just speak to you. I think they pay for electricity.
That makes sense.
There's not, not fair anymore.
There's a, there's a, there's a fountain up in the yard.
Yeah, it's just to access the well.
Yeah, and we turn that on and off every.
And it's just from May first to November first.
Right.
So what days do you wanna? When do you want to have it?
What kind of advertising we need to do?
I think we should move it up at least a month. So if we did them in the middle of November last time, I think you should put it out there in mid-October. That's right, before the. Surge of the harvest, I would say, they might start early, late, or late October, but. You know, first part of November, usually, everybody should be free yet or free for a couple hours maybe. That's interesting, anyway. They'll take time if they wanna be here. I just hate to see them if it's a nice day in the middle of November and. We certainly have interest, so I think we need to do it.
Okay, do, when I do like Oc- October fifteenth or something like that?
Sure, whatever the calendar looks like for. Um, did we do the, I don't know if we did the bid on it? Doesn't matter what day, I guess, whether it's.
It looks like la- yeah, I don't know what day of the week it was. It looks like. Last year, um, notice was published November second and bids were open November nineteenth. And then they, you had in there that it would be awarded December.
You don't have October up there. I mean, we could do the same thing first part of October, publish it and have them open in the middle, middle Thursday or something like that.
That's what I would do.
First meeting in October is October fourth. On a Tuesday. I'm sure we did on a Tuesday last night. It's the eleventh and the eighteenth.
Well, then we can award them on the eighteenth.
So open them.
We just publish it on the fourth and. Open them and award and. Do the public. We do all that. Open them and the raising of their bids on the same day is what we did, yeah.
Right. In which it was.
That would be the eighteen.
Eighteen. And then are you wanting to order that day or wait till the next week?
They sign a contract that day.
Yep.
I mean, if they're the winning bidder, they sign a contract.
I'm just asking for now, it was so much.
That's what we do, we do, that would be on the eighteenth also.
Does that work?
Three years?
I, I think that's a minimum.
Yeah, I would say three years.
I know things change in year to year, but. Most renters want to know that they have at least. A time period to prepare.
Only one I wouldn't mind seeing long in three years is. Um, with, with, um, imagine the possibilities.
Yeah, I would.
I would like to see that a five-year lease.
I would, I would.
I think the very first year time we did do six years.
Yeah.
And then we did carry last time.
But don't, wouldn't you still need the option to negotiate after?
You can put in anything you want in the contract.
And actually, I think, if I remember, we did, we set the. Rent for three years with a date to renegotiate the second three years in the six years. That's how we did that first.
Again, I mean, if we wanna discuss that with Todd and see what he's at, I don't know what his, you know, what.
That's one of the things I would bring up.
I mean, their, their specifications and their whatever parameters are, they change yearly too, I'm sure.
Yep.
With the institution.
Like with rules and regulations and all of that stuff that.
And if you're gonna renegotiate when, when the three year really doesn't work, kinda like.
Yeah, ask them if they wanna rent the whole thing.
Oh, you're a dreamer.
We have that facility, but you only use a quarter, basically, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so it sounds like we've got all of our, uh, decks in a row when it comes to the lease of the Andrew Jackson Farm. Um, I guess we need to discuss what our timeframe is and our timeline, um, when it comes to the welcome center. Um, Sarah and I did talk last week as far as when a public hearing is necessary, so wanna speak about that, Sarah. So the way the code reads is that, um. The board has to set forth proposal and resolution and publish notice at public hearing when you're going to sell county property. If you want to have more than one public hearing, you always can. So if you wanna have a public hearing to decide. To talk about whether and how you're going to sell it, you can do that, or you can just decide. How you wanna go about selling it. Do you wanna use realtor or do you want to do a bid? Um, and then have the public hearing. Once you've got the bids in, that's up to you.
Um. Do we have to have a public hearing prior to that, say that we are going to sell it?
In the, with the way the code reads, I don't think you have to, but it's not a bad idea.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it is too.
I think you need get public input. As to whether they think it's. The right thing to do.
You know, I think we should do it soon enough so we're not sitting with that thing for the winter. Just needs to go. I think you need to do it ASAP.
Absolutely.
If you need more than one public hearing, get it published.
So as soon as you can have that, it would be in a paper next week would be the thirtieth.
Let's do it. That building is not gaining any value, it's just there and it's not. Empty, so.
Well. It's not empty, but. I did, I, I did talk to, to Bonnie and she's going to go down with me and see if there's. Anything that they could use in the museum and the knickknacks and stuff they can sell in their, in their, um, gift shop, but. Um, she said she would be happy to do that. Um, but then, then we have to decide what to do with the rest. And the materials and stuff that are in there. And I'm hoping that the, uh. Tourism Association went and got the boxes and boxes and boxes and boxes of brochures that are there. Otherwise, you'll have one hell of a bonfire. Can't hurt. Okay, so. Anyway, um, do we wanna set, uh. A public hearing for on the thirtieth?
Yeah, do you need, you need to set the publication and the public hearing on the same time, correct? I would make a motion that we publicize and have the public hearing on the thirtieth at.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Motion the second. All those endeavor.
Alright.
And you'll get the wording together and.
Again.
And get the. Luann can get it to the newspaper.
So I understand. Um, so you, what you're asking for is to print setting the date of August thirty, twenty twenty-two at ten AM for a public hea- hearing.
On the sale.
On this, on the sale or the future of the one, of the sale?
The sale.
The sale.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
So the next day. That goes right along with that, or is that something?
Um, I, that is something different. Um, I'm not sure if, if we need to discuss it today. Um.
Do we have any information on it or?
Yeah.
Hard to discuss if I don't know anything about.
Did you email?
I did not.
Then I probably need to wait till next week.
Yeah, I think.
Alls I can tell you is that we've been approached to purchase a piece of property. And, um, we have received. An email concerning the price of the property, but I'm not, I don't think that was the appropriate time to discuss it anyway. Cause I, I.
Lisa and I met with them.
Yeah.
And, uh. It's not something that, um, we're ready to discuss. We wanna share it with you when the appropriate time.
Yeah.
Well, it certainly needs some information for it.
Yes, I know that.
Yes, no. Yesterday got a little, well, yesterday and last night got a little crazy, so. Um, I do have an email that I will share with each of you individually. Okay. And I think with that. I think I'm.
I think we've all. Is there anything more on the LEC wiring and phones? Is that what we already discussed?
No, we're gonna have to, when John gets here, I think we'll discuss that further.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, sure.
Thanks, Sarah. Anything else for you, Lisa?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, Luann, you wanna come forward? Lynn Gokey, our administrative assistant.
I, well, I guess the main thing there is I just wanted you to know that I did apply for that second, they call it the second tranche. Um, I did apply for that and we have received it. It is in our county funds. So, um, again, you know, we've got all kinds of needs. Um, at some point, you as a board are gonna have to decide all of these projects and the needs.
Can you send a updated list of what we had spoke about and where?
Didn't I send that about two weeks ago?
Of the funds and where we allocate them?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
We got a listing of all of the various departments and what their requests were and.
I gotta apologize, I don't know if I seen.
That's okay, you know what?
Send my trash.
I can.
Maybe I put it in trash.
No, there was, no, that's fine, Mike, because there was a request from someone, um, wanting to know if there were any.
Seen that, but I don't think I seen the breakdown. Maybe I didn't go far enough.
No, it should've just been a one-page, um.
It was a one-page and it listed all of the departments and what they had requested and how much.
Yeah.
We had allocated.
I did some estimates. I did estimates on one and actual costs, you know, so we can see. No, that's fine. No, I'll take. I'll be sent it. It's okay. Yeah, no, it's fine, but, uh. Um, and that did show that we were unfortunately in the deficit and I, you know.
Well.
Well, a lot of it was projections, if I remember right, so it was.
We just put some money towards project. We don't even know how close we're, we're coming to some of that.
Well, and I, I, I think the one of the, as we talked yesterday when I was here.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I think we need to look at that list and we need to look at the departments and we'd let, need to look at what funding they. Have that they could use instead of the hyper money.
Yeah.
Hyper money and, and we just need to have a discussion with them because. There's a lot of requests and there's a lot of dollars.
Oh, yeah.
And so we need to.
Yeah.
Try to allocate them where they're most needed.
Well, and you know, I know that we put money in for the harbor wall as an example. I'll use that. We've allocated a dollar amount to that, but I don't know how close we are. Has they done anything as far?
No. But, yeah, the side of that is, and, and that was early in our discussion about where we were allocating or projecting. Now, if we're talking about updating some wiring here, well, that's a different conversation.
Right.
That is something that definitely needed and could be being used for that.
And that's what we have to look at, the list, what, what's on the list and what, what can wait and what can't.
So what, what's going on with the harbor wall? Nate's trying to get another grant and use that. Money as a match to do the, the, uh.
But.
Grant, because that's part two. So he wants to combine it to.
Or a state grant or?
Sure, which one?
I'd be careful that it's.
Yeah, and he was gonna find out if that's.
Okay, thank you.
But I know that Griff is on the conservation board too, and he had a large part of with the city of Bellevue when they put. New municipal docks in, that he got some grant money for him, so he's well aware of how that project works and. But from Nate, when he sat here a couple of weeks ago, said that they were gonna maybe try to combine the project and. Make it more feasible for everybody, which makes sense, yeah. Either way, we gotta pay for that dock and that wall or it's gonna fall in, so.
Is it?
We just decided when we did the other thing, we might relieve the taxpayer a little bit by using that. Now, maybe that's not the case going forward. I don't.
Yeah, see, I, and, and you know what? Maybe I'm way high on the estimate too.
Yeah.
Or maybe I don't have enough.
Well, we're, yeah, we're at about what they said they thought it would cost, so.
Yeah.
Well, the contractor had said one thing one year, by the time the next year come around, his material and whatnot. Yeah. Changed.
You know, and the other thing, and I'm not. The other thing, just to break forward, is that we never have heard another word about what I call the Ashley Henson Grant.
Oh, well, we're. Yeah, we did. We heard about it yesterday.
Oh. Oh.
We're still hearing about it.
Okay. We need.
Feeble's come back for some more information, um, they want to, of course, instead of having the A O.
E O C.
E O C Center as a separate unit, um. They wanna include the Davis Bacon. I can send the emails that were forwarded to Lynn and Kelly yesterday, but.
Okay.
Anyway, we're trying to figure out with FEMA if we can get a. Explanation from the higher, higher than where we're speaking from.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're not really using them for wages, so the Davis Bacon shouldn't come into play.
Yep.
We're using it for material.
Yep.
But.
Yeah.
According to them, it's all part of the same.
Okay.
Nothing is easy.
It's, it's almost measurable.
Yeah, okay.
So. Had conversations with Lynn and Kelly both yesterday and they're working with Miguel from. The local FEMA office and.
Yeah, it's probably the same lady I talked to.
Tara.
Tara, yeah.
Yeah, they're communicating with the upper.
The last time that I spoke to her, she was just about as frustrated as we.
Yeah, and she is. She's very helpful. She's been very helpful, but. You know, she can only do so much to her and her, her hands are tied.
Yep.
I said, if it need to be, we make two phone calls and say, hey, we're.
I, I just wish that we would've known about all of the loops.
Well, I guess, you know, what's discouraging is it was announced almost two years ago by now that.
Mm-hmm.
We were approved for this, but where were the, where were all them loops that were jumping through now? Where, where were they at?
Yeah.
They hadn't bought them up yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, we're still in work in progress.
Yeah.
Work in progress. I was gonna forward them yesterday. Well, it was, it was yesterday afternoon when I talked to Kelly again and. She was waiting, so. I can easily forward them on to you.
Okay.
Okay, the wind.
Okay. Well, all I have for you this week is the calendar. Um, two o'clock this afternoon, Jack needs to be in Muscatine for a Mississippi Valley workforce CEO meeting. Six o'clock tonight is conservation board meeting out at Hurstville for Larry. I tentatively have they did a historic preservation committee meeting for tonight, but I don't have any information on that at this point. Thursday, August eighteenth at nine AM is the housing trust fund meeting, um, for Mike. Interview, I think that may be a Zoom-only meeting now that I think about it. Six o'clock Thursday.
That is a Zoom.
A Zoom-only meeting, okay. Six o'clock Thursday night is limestone gloves R C and D meeting, also by Zoom for Jack. Friday, August nineteenth, um, I had Jack down to go to a early childhood Iowa strategic planning session in Agni. I'm not sure he's gonna go to that. Um, at noon, Mike has a D cap meeting in Duitt. And from four to six Friday afternoon, um, is a Jackson County Historical Society open house at Clinton Engines for any of you that wanna attend. Um.
That's why I might be not going.
Not going to Agni.
I really wanna go to Agni, but. You need to be at the historical society, so. I'm weighing. Since I'm not up for election this fall, I don't.
I haven't even thought of that.
Anyway.
All right, Monday, August twenty-second. Um, at four PM is an early childhood Iowa council meeting in Duitt for Jack. At five o'clock, I have tentatively a Mississippi Valley workforce executive board meeting by Zoom also for Jack. And at six thirty that evening is a Jackson County Board of Adjustment meeting. And I will be out of the office that day. Uh, that may. Needs me. Um, our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, August twenty-third at nine AM. Okay.
Lynn, you have a copy that contract for conservation.
What's that?
You just had it.
Yeah, I've got it here.
Letter.
Do you have that on your mailer where that all comes from?
Oh, is it in the package?
Yeah. Mike asked if you could have a copy of that.
Okay. Let me see what I can do. Yep.
Okay. Lori, do you have anything other than the public hearing?
Well, I can update you a little bit on the last night's commission meeting if it's allowed.
I'll allow you.
Okay.
Lori Rolling, our zoning administrator.
I didn't know. I had to follow the rules or something.
We try to follow the rules.
Okay, so the commission met last night. They didn't have a case before them, but it was withdrawn. They, the people making a petition for zoning change, withdraw yes, ripped her yesterday after known fierce opposition from adjoining property owners. So that was withdrawn. We did have on our agenda that there's gonna be a work session, so. It came to our attention at the previous commission meeting that several of our members, well, they haven't been properly trained. And they haven't been sent to any schools. They haven't, they don't know their roles in what they're doing. They don't know their roles as a commissioner and then I'm finding some of them talking to his Board of Adjustment members. They want more information. They want more training. So we tried to do with the help of Laura Carson. She put together a packet, just kind of the base, very basics of what the commission does. And that's one thing too, I'd like to, we really need to have a comprehensive session for education for probably bringing our board supervisors back into the loop and and know what the role, their role is in the primarily the commission and in zoning. Those, those type of cases, I mean, cases, and then also as far as ordinances. I had reached out to the Iowa State Extension Office or University Iowa State, yeah, about training and I can actually get into a training with the city of Bettendorf at the end of this month, but to be able to have them come here and get our Board of Supervisors, our Commission, our Board of Adjustment and any other entities that wanna be part of it is, and then also invite our city of Bellevue, city of Macocota, which would also help share in the cause to help educate people on the zoning, the zoning processes that, that they're up against. So. Yeah, so we did do a, a light education last night of, of the commission's roles in the in, in zoning and the commission's ready to start working on a comprehensive plan, which we do not have. And it sounds like, I mean, everything I've read, it says refer back to your comprehensive plan. What does your comprehensive plan say? Well, when you don't have a comprehensive plan, it's a little hard to.
Get open to anything.
It's open to anything, which is not.
No.
There isn't one.
You have a comprehensive plan for the county though.
Do you know where it's at? Dave, Dave Manning says we do not. For zoning, there is not.
For zoning.
Correct, and that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. No.
The land use, it's a land use policy.
And you said they're like that thick.
Yeah.
I don't have it.
No, I don't. I know you don't. So. So anyway, they're ready to start working on a comprehensive plan and it sounds like Manning has some good late work done, but that goes back to two thousand six, two thousand seven, which typically when a comprehensive plan's done, it's not done in-house. Some of it is, but there's all kinds of meetings, hearings, public input, so it's a long drawn out process, which usually an E C I H high group or a, or a some type of a firm does the bulk of the late work on that. But the, the commission is ready and, and says, yes, we really need a comprehensive plan. They're also ready to start. They wanna write ordinance for solar farms, wind turbines and other sustainable energy type projects. So that we don't end up in situations like what's going on in Delaware County and went on, went, went on in Clinton County.
Yes.
So they're ready to start working on ordinance for that. And then they're looking at working on text changes of to work, make, get some things fixed out in Leisure Lake. Leisure Lake is different. It doesn't fit. I mean, the lot sizes.
Oh, that.
The lots.
We have a price for that.
But it is, it's unique, it's a unique area and the size of the lots are unique. And then when that was first subdivided back in the sixties, I'm sure Mr. Mrs., the, the Schwinkers and the Kertoffs had no, this wasn't part of their vision, that people would have houses and garages and.
They would go up there, build a cabin and come for the weekend.
Yeah, so that was a different vision. So we were, were working with the commission right now. They're ready to work on text changes. And when we get to a certain point, we need to talk to you guys about some of the issues that are going on that we wanna try to address with, with these changes. So.
Have we had any response back from the current letters that are out there?
I haven't seen that they even been sent yet.
Oh.
So it's been approved. I, I reached out.
The post business that's going on up there, there's nothing.
It doesn't sound like the letters have been sent.
Okay.
I know, and I reached out to her last week. Actually, I reached out to Missy and Damian last week with a, with a email. Asked more what the status was on that and then also let them know that they probably be getting a phone call from a reporter. So. But that's.
I thought the way they talked, the next day they were gonna send those letters.
They're ready.
Get them out.
I know. Yeah, so I'll be, I had that email opened up a little bit ago, but didn't. I was gonna call her at that point, but I got involved in something else. But, uh, but anyway, but yes, so be looking at hearing about a comprehensive plan.
True.
And you guys are gonna pay for that, right?
Well, I was just gonna mention that, so.
Just use our, our money.
What kind of number you're talking about is, but is it something that we have to budget for or is it something we can?
Oh, you'd have to budget for it, yes. Yeah.
There.
Found it now.
Well, that makes a difference, because we just started a new year, yeah.
So we'll have to talk about that is, is a I don't know if I need to start getting quotes on that or not.
Oh, I think, absolutely.
I think it would be.
I mean, I know I did the. I can't remember. Does the city of Macocota have one and it's had done recently or the city of Bellevue?
We had one done a couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago?
Yeah.
And you don't know the average cost or anything?
I don't know the cost today. I don't think it's.
We can, we can investigate that a little bit.
I will just add a comment that I think the city would be interested in a two mile, you know, you talked about county version of comprehensive plan, but say you would have an interest in what happens just outside of jurisdictional lines to have some influence on that and kinda have kind of a color-coded map along the way, so. Whatever happens, just please involve us.
Usually anything within two miles of a.
I think that's already in place.
Yeah, yeah, that we have to get your clarification.
You have to approve, approve.
Yeah.
Yeah. Another big public input.
Yeah.
I mean, plenty of it from my understanding, right?
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on proposed ordinance number three oh four, Stinas Rezoning.
Well, Brian presented his case about rezoning the, the property at the corner of three hundred sixty second Avenue and Highway fifty two, south of south of Bellevue. The commission is on board, did not see any reason to add any restrictions or stipulations to it. And we did not get any public input from any any neighbors or anyone else that fell agreement to the rezoning. So.
Have we received anything in here, Luann?
Yeah.
Have the board members had any comments?
I have not seen city water going out there or is it not on that?
Well, there won't be any water going to that property. Cause it's a. His, no, his projected use is gonna be mini storage, so it wouldn't require.
Oh, okay.
Require any type of water substance or sanitary treatment.
You may be referring to the, the land that they purchased down there, but the, the water is not the big issue. It's the sewer system that's their issue, so.
Like going across the road for any future development or? Got it.
Over the hill and off. But I, I did not receive any calls.
I have not.
I talked to Brian personally here and he indicated his plans and that he made contact with all the neighbors and they sound like they're on board and I.
Any comment, Brian?
He's just ready to roll.
Mom is the word, huh?
Yeah.
Well, if you've seen any of Brian's, Brian has several storage units in place right now, so if you've seen any of them, you can tell that he maintains them and there's not rubbish around and he enforces, enforces that, so.
Right.
That's a case where if you're looking at what he's been doing or what he does, does with the current operation.
I don't find his, you know, his many storage.
I would say it's top notch, pretty, pretty close.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
So anyway, yeah, we, yeah, when we sent out neighbors, sent neighbors letters at the time of the public hearing or before the public hearing, five hundred feet all the way around him, didn't hear from one of them.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion and a second to close the public hearing on, uh, proposed ordinance number three oh four. All those in favor?
I.
I, motion carried.
I'd make a motion to approve.
And are you waving the second and third reading?
I can do that.
Is that part of your motion?
Yes. I would second that.
With motion and a second to approve ordinance number three oh four and wave the second and third reading. All those in favor?
I.
I, motion carried.
Thanks, guys.
Um, before you leave, I just, you know, people don't really hear good things very often or not as often as we'd like. But I've had several of your board members that are very pleased with what you're doing.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And you do, I just gotta make sure you guys are aware, Laura's a big part of that. Laura Carson's, she makes me look good. And if it wasn't for Laura, uh, this would be a whole different.
Well, they said it's a whole new ballgame.
Good.
Under your leadership, so we appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll share that with Laura too, just because I know how big of a role she plays in that.
That'll be fine.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks, guys.
Our next item will be Lynn Volpes, and so at this time we'll recess until we're joined by her. Coordinator of just. Okay. We're reconvening the meeting. We're being joined by Lynn Volpes, Jackson County Coordinator of Disability Services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jack and I attended the monthly Regional Governing Board meeting in one of the health region yesterday, so just a few highlights from that. There was a little bit of a discussion on where the finances look as a projection into the next several years. We've talked here much on a regular basis about fund balances and we are still awaiting to hear the DHS decision on the application from the region to consider encumbering a little over five million dollars for this current fiscal year. If they would approve that application, then that amount would not be considered as a part of our available fund balance for the fiscal year, so that would be a favorable decision. At this point, I don't think we have any indication when we are the other. What DHS will decide. One of the things that David Farmer, the region's fiscal agent, prepared for the board was just a, his best effort at a projection into through fiscal year twenty five where we land with fund balances. If you remember, the end of this current fiscal year, our fund balance is to be twenty percent. Next fiscal year, it's to be five percent. There's been quite a bit of discussion about whether or not five percent is an adequate amount for regions to move forward at the beginning of fiscal year twenty five. That concern originated primarily out of concern whether or not the state would actually give the quarterly state dollar payments to the regions in the time of the man. To date, they have been doing that. So what that means is from a cash flow perspective, every three months, we're getting a payment from the state. And if that continues that way, then at the start of any new fiscal year, there would be that new quarterly payment that money could have been received. So the five percent at the present time is maybe not quite as much of a concern as it happened previously, but you say that's a fair, absolute assessment of that. One thing that will come to the board next week will be a revised memorandum of understanding. There had to be a change in that M O U when the region decided to move from quarterly reimbursed reimbursement of expenses with state dollars, reimbursement to each county of administrative costs and service administration costs. That originally was anticipated to be done on a quarterly basis. That got switched to a monthly basis. So that is the only detail really in the revised M O U. So I believe, I had a leave early yesterday, but I think Ken was going to sign this for each respective county. And so I should be bringing that here and probably just give it to you, Lisa, and just do it as a part of.
Yep.
Your report, yeah.
Yep.
Cause the board's already talked about it. The governing board had entered into a one-year contractual agreement with the T B A Media to do marketing to make sure information was getting out throughout the region of the crisis services in particular. Here in the T B A gave an update on that. He had outlined a plan for three phases. The first phase is done. That was primarily identifying media sources within the five counties in touch base. For example, several months ago, I was on just talk with the program director for the, from the Robert Young Center for the Crisis System. There's radio spots, there's TV spots you might have seen on some quite city TV stations. He's moving into phase two right now, which is targeting the college age population and their parents as they move in. The idea being not just to target and hopefully reach people who are in need, but just reach the general public, the general college population and their families, so that if they know of someone else who has a need, they too have idea on resources, what's available. The third phase will occur later this calendar year and that will be targeting the elementary and school age children. He's actually going to be writing a book that he's for children, for elementary age children. One of the features of that book, besides addressing mental health, is the back cover is going to have information on resources available for the crisis system, so. I would say following through with doing what he had proposed to the board. He's looking at, he's using social media, TikTok, Spotify, some of those, saying the ones that he's finding are actually some of the more effective. So that's kind of where that's at. I guess the only other thing I was gonna mention was after Todd Seibert was here from Imagine the Possibilities, he did send a request to Laura Eelen, the region CEO, just asking if there are any region funds available for their anticipated building projects. I believe he might have mentioned while he was here, that they were looking at building a home that would be completely accessible to help accommodate some of the needs of some of the aging population that they have. Management team took that request into consideration and Lori presented it to the board yesterday. Management team's thought on it was that it, the, it would be money being requested, the way he worded it specifically for building costs to help us with that, and the purchase of the land was a part of that. That there was some concern maybe previously about region dollars being used for that kind of permanent infrastructure.
Where that home being?
Well, I'm not really sure. He said, I think when he's here.
He indicated a couple lots that were, might be, when he said that, I don't know where they were. He didn't indicate where they were.
He didn't indicate.
He was working on it.
Apparently he had the lots located and I, I think he said, he said the lots were like forty thousand dollars.
Yes.
That's like forty thousand dollars to build the five hundred.
Yeah. So that was a concern that the management team had in terms of using dollars for that, not any reflection on the need for the, the building or anything. Also, it was an unsolicited request for funding and historically when the region has allocated money, it's been through a request for proposal project that the region initiates, and this was not a part of any R P process. The board had quite a lot lengthy discussion, I would say, and it is something, you know, that I think that they would like more information on.
And I did talk to Lori, uh, Lori Edwards. And when, when you and I meet with Todd, she'd like to be able to zoom in.
Oh, sure.
And I said, well, we could certainly do that at the courthouse. That's not a problem, as long as you weren't around. And I said, we would let her know when that was gonna be.
And I said, we would let her know when that was gonna be.
Yeah.
And she said she would try to. You know, I guess the thing, you know, in. The premise for this is that as people age, as they age out of the facility that they're in and they need to go into. Another facility and, you know. I guess I was a little frustrated yesterday listening to the talk. You know, I was really frustrated. With Todd's request. Or imagine for the respite that. And but they kept talking about. As these people die, what happens or whatever? And I thought, well, and I, and I did say yesterday as well. When, when somebody passes away, there's other people that are aging into those needed areas. And so I, I, I just. I thought they were really probably closed minded about it yesterday, the board. That upset me.
Yeah, so the task that Jack and I have is to get more information from Todd specifically about. But is there a, is it geared toward a specific population? And without this kind of setting. Where would those individuals need to go? Would they need to leave a current living arrangement within Imagine to go to some of the.
It almost sounds like that if the facility was there and you could buy it, they go along with. Now that you wanna build it, put it there, that's almost like. But there should be a way.
And, and you know. They've talked about just having them go to nursing homes, but nursing homes aren't here to provide mental health services. Or just their, their residents, you know. I just, I couldn't quite understand where they were coming from and what their whole.
What about the county farm, still space?
Well, I, and I brought that up, didn't I? We were talking about, well, they used to have county homes and I says, well, we still have a county home that's half empty. Because they won't let anybody be in one wing. I says, we can only have one wing open. We would have a place to put people if they would only allow us to use it.
Well, and they were gonna work on that a little bit to change that little law.
Well. It's not a real little law, unfortunately. It's a federal, the, the federal government weighed in on all of this a number of years ago about how they see a suitable, what they call. Settings and home and community based services, and they have established some rules and some criteria. So that is why. When Imagine reopened the care facility for that particular service, in order for them to get that Medicaid funding that they could receive. For anybody who lives there that's Medicaid eligible, that has to be provided in a facility that is sixteen beds or less. And then similarly to.
And then when they tried to see if they could get to sixteen venues. They would not allow it in the same structure.
Structure, yeah. So there are some restrictions that are being imposed, not even just from the state level. But more from the federal level, you start with.
So there's a lot of land out there. Would that, yeah, option to build something there separate?
Well, one of the, the philosophies of the federal government and the states have to adhere to it is. To integrate individuals with disabilities into communities.
Let's restrict.
Yes, and, and assimilate them into neighborhoods and things like that. They have, the state is actually frowned upon some agencies and other parts of the state that have wanted to build. Similar kinds of living arrangements in the same area, because then all of a sudden it becomes still kind of a congregation, even though it's not the same physical building. It creates its own little neighborhood, if you will, but of individuals with disabilities. So that's why group homes are scattered throughout communities. In neighborhoods, yeah. So, yeah, we'll set a time to meet with Todd and get more information. Uh, I was just gonna let the board know that. The other thing that. The governing board has contracted with this entity called Solution Point Plus. Those are the two police officers that started a company. To do training to law enforcement. In addition to the mental health region having a contract. The state CEOs, so Laura Elin and her counterparts have a contract with the same company with Solution Point Plus. To do nine trainings of crisis intervention training. Specifically to law enforcement, where people in the law enforcement field throughout the state. One of those trainings.
Actually the big news.
Big news that we will be hosting one of those nine trainings here in McCokey that at the water station. Bjorn's gonna be the IT person I call. One of the requirements of a facility. It'll be held here the week of September nineteenth. It's a forty hour training. Monday through Friday. It's a, it's a large commitment for any law enforcement agency to be able to send officers. As you can imagine, because those officers are working that forty hours of that week as a part of that training. So to provide adequate coverage. While tying up offices is not an easy thing to do. Maximum participation is twenty people. Because of the nature of the course. But I think we will benefit from providing one of these. We have. Couple of officers each from Bellevue and from the local PD, someone from dispatches registered. And I believe the sheriff's office is sending a number of officers and also potentially some jail staff. So I'm hoping that a greater majority of the twenty people are actually associated with Jackson County. This is the best opportunity. I believe they've held them with this fee was nine or ten.
But they will have.
Yeah, it will, there's already seven people signed up with pretty much a commitment of five people or more. Sheriff's Department. I just don't have the registrations yet. So I think we're in pretty good shape. And the other advantage is whatever costs are associated with people participating. The region is going to pay, so we will pay for mileage for people that traveled here for meals and. We did have sheriff's deputy and a correctional officer go out to New. For the same training in July. So all of those related costs are covered by the region. So this is a time. For law enforcement, although the, the staffing is still the concern, at least there's an offset of any expense. There's no registration cost. For the training itself. So, yeah, that's what he.
Really, he said it's gonna be here.
Yeah, yeah, I am too. The mental health region will be offering. One of those trainings each of the, this fiscal year and the next two fiscal years. So within our five counties, we should have three more at the same. And the other piece of data information, I just wanted to pass along. I think the month of July was probably a record month. For mobile crisis outreach to come through the crisis system. We had fifteen calls that were placed from Jackson County, so that's. That's a high usage of that service. Nine of those came from people individually, from themselves or family members or neighbors. And several. Or from the jail and then a couple of. So that's what I have. Anything else?
Well, you know, one of the things that, you know. I guess I'm a small minded. I never thought about it, but you know, when, when somebody calls the, the, the hotline for help. I never thought about it, being if your area code is five, six, three, or. You know, if you're here in college from Illinois or Wisconsin. Your home phone number would be that area code. And so that's where the request or the concern would shoot to that. Their home state, not necessarily here. And so that's one of the things that they're, that they're working on too, so that. You know, they're really trying to, Gary, the TBA says it's really important that college students and their parents at orientation. Get all this information so that if there are, you know, kids are away from home and they're having problems that they don't wanna admit it to their mom and dad. And they don't wanna admit it to their friends, then where do they go for help? So, and that's that book we thought they talked about last week. That's why I want my granddaughter to read that before they take off for college. Out in the year, but.
So where that really is an impact, if you hear or have heard any advertisements in the media since July sixteen. Nationwide, they rolled out the nine eight eight mental health crisis line. There was always a national suicide hotline, but at the federal level. They implemented a three-digit dialing for mental health crises, including the suicide hotline. One of the challenges with that, so the question yesterday was, do we start advertising within our mental health region for nine eight eight? And Gary M T V A asked that specifically because of college students. It would, that's where it was mentioned that if you're coming from Chicago and going to St. Ambrose, you call nine eight eight, you're gonna get hooked back up. Crisis system in the Chicago area. You're not gonna get to the local crisis line that's gonna know the resources of where you're physically at. If you call, uh, Your Life Iowa, which is a crisis line that the state of Iowa, through the Iowa Department of Public Health. Probably a year and a half, two years ago. Or if you call the initial crisis line that our mental health region had established. Those calls will all go directly to Foundation Two, because they are an answering service for those two specific ten digit numbers. That is one of the concerns about the federal nine eight eight and promoting it right now. And how exactly that's gonna be fixed, I'm not sure. But that's, that's the challenge. Anything else? Yeah, yeah, sounds good. Thanks.
Okay, the other item left of the agenda is. Anything from some judicial.
And we had a meeting last Friday. Trying to get caught up, these federal still is like four hundred fifty thousand. It was over nine hundred, so they're just really slow. Repaying for federal prisons and medical bills and stuff like that. And serve it all gradually. Moving up a little bit, this is, they've just been really slow and they keep landing it on the news system or this or that or that. We're okay with our budget, but it's really. Well, we had a couple of rules that were in. Review training and stuff. They do a lot of pilot programs or more so than the other districts in the state. If they find something that you wanna try, they throw it our way.
I would say that the Department of Human Service Council, yeah, last week had. We met jointly with the Department of Health and they were showing us the logos for the new. Entity and it seems that things going, are, are going really smoothly with the, with the merger of. The Department of Health and Department of Human Services. I don't know, Kelly Garcia gets everything that she's done. It's just, it's, it's really amazing what all takes place there. Our meeting last week was towards for the budget and so we had several entities. E C I was one of them that made presentations towards their requests for budget. And so. That's something we'll be dealing with at our next meeting of the budget. And I think when last year, it was about that thick. And they said now with the, with the combined budget, it'll probably be half that. Really, really good people serving on that. Lots of, lots of input from a lot of people.
I think EMS, next meeting for EMS is where we're going next week, right, Luan? I guess they've made contact with a couple different services and that. Asked them that they put on their agenda. I don't know where we're at with the coordinator. So put on their agenda to talk about it, to see what their needs and wants might be and if we can come up with a plan. That's feasible for everybody, you know, smaller, smaller communities and.
Yeah, I, I hope they can come up with that. I hope they can come up with. Some type of joint meeting so we can discuss.
Yeah.
What the future's.
Well, and they're willing to do that. I said, we'd like your recommendation from EMS. EMS board, now that, that encompasses all of the EMS.
Right.
Get input from all your EMSs and bring us a recommendation and bring us a session we can talk about. We know where to go with it. We don't really where to go. See what their wants to be.
Yeah, and that's, that's the main thing is we don't know what their needs are. We didn't know.
Well, we do know the personnel because.
Yeah.
Everybody show up personnel.
Yeah, absolutely.
Volunteers are volunteers. So, or they paid anything for their trips or. Ambulance service to Bellevue gets paid for minimal amount for to run a call. I'm not sure what it is. But they have now have a paid paramedic class. They hired a paid. There today, you're not something you can look at. Everybody's time will have to see what the other service, that's a track or that's a transport EMS, so there's. Oklahoma Bellevue that are transport. And then, I don't know if you had a chance, I know Lisa had printed out the balances for end of year. I don't know if anybody had a chance. I just started looking at that. Do we need a work session to go over some of the balances and, or overages or, you know, would that help our budget session going forward?
I think it's a good tool.
I mean, I highlighted some stuff, but I only got ten pages in.
As an example, I always butcher for a special election. You just never know.
So you were really close on your elections. Well, look, you know, but you know, you look at some of the other ones and I didn't get through them, of course, but. So far, they're looking fairly good.
Well, we can certainly schedule that as. I looked at some of them and.
It's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, to see where, you know, where we're.
And some is because of unfinished projects.
Yeah.
Or, or that started projects.
And there's explanations for all of them.
Yeah, it, it's funny because, you know, going through the claims today and then you brought up, there was so much for the jail. And I've had, I mean, everybody that I've run into, they say, when are they starting the jail? We thought it would be almost stopped by now. And I said, well, it's not.
And I, I, I believe that's what some of the things that we're paying for are supplies or products.
Sure, well, certainly it's for plumbing.
I see that, yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know what, I never did hear what, what the reason for the door being open.
I don't know. Yeah.
We talked about who had keys, who had accessibility to it. But, uh, yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, when I talked to him a while back here, Julie says. It's unbelievable on John's part, he said he's waiting. He's got bits for Dor Hardwood, that's the Hardwood. Said they're forty, four zero weeks out. Or hardware.
Yeah.
We could, we could get the footage. I said, well, we'd like to see some type of.
Progress.
Get the footage in, but they're, they got behind with all the rain. We hit the four inches of rain and they got behind and. He said, yeah, we can get it, but we can't get no preset concrete and Joe, whatever. Yeah, we need some progress.
And Marty did get the needs more down there.
Hey, is, are we gonna just recess till John gets here?
You know, I haven't heard that. I just checked my phone to see if he sent a text or anything. So I don't know if he had some issues, so. I don't, I don't see a reason to.
I would say that we can have a motion to adjourn. Second, motion of a second to adjourn all those.